Oh, Oxman. Oxman, that's the bucket, and this is gonna happen.
Yeah.
And so, Grace boosted Lily up. She crawled through the bathroom window, checking to be open. And then.
Hi.
I follow through all the stuff. You know, she could crawl across the top of everything.
I got it, I feel ya.
And it wouldn't open for me.
Ready for school to start.
Get back to you. It's like, come on, you can come through the window if you're gonna search it.
So there's the bigger window right by the night, or the dining table. So she slid that open and took the screen out, which she broke in the process of Christmas.
That is the worst.
Um, and then the security guard.
Yeah, I had her.
Chair climbed in and was sitting on the table, the, of the camper, looking around.
I mean it.
With his flashlight, scoping everything out, looking for people, and then decided, okay, you're good, and then he crawls back out. It's just a cluster.
Is um, do they, uh, did that come back from the monitor?
Oh, we can.
No, well, then they got there and tried to.
Plug in your monitor. See if that, I wonder if they just needed to like power reset? Did that work?
They ended up just kicking the doorknob and it busted, and so they ended up buying a new door. Apparently.
Are you serious?
Sacrificed their five hundred dollars, or their damage deposit.
Oh, she said.
Yeah, I don't know.
Goes where?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, it is six o'clock. I'll call the Sartell City Council meeting for Monday, August fourteenth order. Please arise for pledge of allegiance.
You stood to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, next item up is the, uh, agenda review and adoption. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll say in that.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Then we have open forum, public comment. We have one registered for tonight. Again, reminder, uh, three minute timeframe, and that your topic cannot cover something that is, uh, currently on our agenda for review tonight. We have Peter Wilson. If you'd step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening. My name is Peter Wilson, eleven zero eight Celebration Drive, Sartell, Minnesota. Want to talk about several things. I've had a recent revision to it due to the agenda. Um, I'm gonna talk on, let's talk on specifically the United Way. I had been present about five years ago at one of the planning commissions. And I'm not gonna get into the in-depth involvement that we need to address there. But at the time, the United Way put on, I wouldn't call it sophomoric, because it was well below that. It was hokey pokey jokey, a little movie where what they were doing was they had built some houses or obtained houses or whatever for, uh, people that were homeless or drunk or whatever, and they put them in there. And they thought it was a wonderful deal, and that we should have those all over the place. Again, they can believe anything they want. I don't think they are necessarily a good organization. But anyway, in that case, um, the final part of that was, if you need help, we have people that can come to the different city councils and sell this idea. Well, I took that one way, maybe it was meant another. But again, perhaps that was somewhat later on reinforced by my involvement with a gentleman who was, uh, they were a component of an election issue. Not that they did anything wrong as far as voting, was the presence of a table and a desk where it shouldn't have been. But either way, I am not impressed with them, their intent, their agenda, or anything else. The fact that somebody says they do good, they may do good, but that doesn't mean they are good. Uh, next part of this is, um, the sustainability goals which exist here. And if you aren't familiar with them, up those sitting in front of me, or to the sides, or either way, you should be. Uh, those are United Nations program. I'm a proud member of the John Birch Society, having joined in nineteen eighty-one, and believe in many other things, but one of the things is, look at who funds it, look at what they want, look at why they want it, and look at why they're changing the names. Again, the Agenda twenty-one, we have the sustainability goals. Oddly enough, as you might imagine, they're the same here in other places. Green steps, welcoming cities, um, we look at the live concept. All of this is a problem. Again, even the city of Saint Cloud, which due to the globalonialist mayor, was voted, uh, the best city in the world due to the, it's working with them. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Council, next item on our agenda is the approval of city council minutes from July twenty-fourth regular meeting. I'll take a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the July twenty-fourth regular meeting minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Uh, consent agenda items. We have items A through J. Uh, I'd like to poll items I and J for just brief, uh, discussion. Are there any others?
I would like to poll item G.
Item G? Any others? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve A through H with the exception of G. Is there a second? Motion and a second on items A through H with the exception of G. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Uh, Jed, item G.
Uh, yeah, item G, I just wanna poll, so I have the ability to abstain from voting on that, just because I have decision-making power on the other side of that transaction.
Okay.
I might do it on some.
Okay. Any, uh, other discussion on item G? Seeing none, would look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve item G. Is there a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. One abstaining. Uh, I had items, uh, excuse me, I, uh, this is the approval of ditch thirteen study in design. Uh, and Anna, if you wouldn't mind touching on, uh, a little bit of the community outreach engagement to the neighborhood, uh, meeting you had this week. I'd also call out that this is really the progression of the, or part of the surface water issue that we've had in the wilds. Uh, ditch thirteen may not ring a bell for some.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, last week, we did have the neighborhood meeting, uh, where we presented to them the plan that council reviewed at the workshop, uh, from the July meeting. Um, and actually had a, a really great turnout. Um, we had, prior to that, we had put the recording from the July meeting up on our, our ClearGov site. So some folks may have been able to see the direction from the study and, and council prior to coming. But, um, we had a full room and overall, very receptive, excited, positive, and really, quite frankly, relieved. Um, relieved that the council's taking action. Uh, we did the study back in twenty twenty-two and are, and are now actually doing something. And so, I, I know there was a lot of appreciation around, you know, the two and a half million actually being put to use to an immediate fix or as immediate as we can possibly do in, in twenty twenty-four. There were a lot of questions around the design of the ditch, um, and how that open ditch concept will look. And so, I, I know there's still a lot of remaining questions around that. Um, many of them have signed up for the ClearGov site and we'll kinda keep in touch with them. In that way, we're meeting with one homeowner out there tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
We'll continue, um, the design portion of it. We're nowhere near a stage in it where we can determine what that ditch will look like. But overall, very receptive and appreciative, so it was a, a great meeting.
Good. Appreciate that. Uh, council, any other discussion on the ditch thirteen study in design? Seeing none, I'll make the motion to approve that. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And item J, just, um, quick question, April. Um, we now acquired a landfill, looking at the sediment, and I know that was a discussion previous of we have to pay for that sediment to go to a landfill somewhere. What's the thought process on it, timing wise? We're paying out, I think it was a hundred and thirty thousand maybe to bring it to a landfill or the removal of it? Can we mitigate any of that?
Yeah, uh, Mayor Fitzsim, this agreement is for taking sediment samples in the design, which will allow us to do the dredging in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
That should allow us enough time to get the landfill re-permitted. Um, and we've started that process already, and we anticipate we'll be able to take the sediment, that that'll get approved. Um, to be able to take it there for the actual dredging portion of this project.
Okay. Um, and that'll happen in twenty twenty-four, correct?
The, the dredging, right. Yep, the, it's budgeted for the actual dredging in twenty twenty-four, but the design and sediment samples are budgeted for twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Great. That's all I had. Any other discussion on item J? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve item J.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Item seven, uh, public hearing, we have cannabis interim ordinance and Title VII ordinance amendment.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't have anything to present, but I'll provide a little bit of, uh, context on both of these items before we open the public hearing, uh, for any comments and questions. Um, so the first, the cannabis interim ordinance, this is being brought forward as a recommendation from staff that we basically put a pause on the retail sales of cannabis. And so, this would hold off until the state would stand up their own process. The state is going to license and handle licensing, similar to how we handle liquor license right now, and, um, tobacco licenses right now. The state handles it all, and it, and then it comes through the local jurisdiction. They're gonna do the same thing for cannabis. However, they don't have that office stood up yet. Um, estimates are that by twenty twenty-five, they would have it stood up. Um, but we're gonna hold off on doing any licensing of retail cannabis until we have that office stood up. It is what most cities are doing. Um, cities could create their own licensing process if they choose and go outside of the state process and then revamp it all to fall in line with the state, um, licensing. But, uh, we think it, for efficiency purposes, makes the most sense to just follow whatever the state does once they develop their office. So that's the first item. The Title VII ordinance amendment is really more of a formality. Currently, we follow the Clean Air Act, which does not allow, we do not allow smoking of tobacco products, cigarette or e-cigarette, in any of our public properties. This would just add cannabis as an additional item that we do not allow, uh, to be smoked in public properties. The, when this was passed officially, um, in play August first, the law does state that if we follow the Clean Air Act, that cannabis falls under that. We just wanted to clarify it in our ordinances to just be that much more specific in the event that anybody would ever ask. Um, so it's really just officially adding cannabis as a, a third item that we don't allow smoking in public properties. Um, so for both of those ordinance amendments, uh, we can open the, the public hearing for both of them. One additional item I'd like, uh, for some discussion and conversation on, whether it's now or after the public hearing, is, uh, we did have a business, uh, that was brought forward to us that was, um, distributing in an off-sale setting, uh, THC beverages. So we would just like guidance. They were under the understanding that because the state allows it, um, they could sell them. We, now, our ordinance does not allow it, specifically calls out that we don't allow it. So just wanna either get guidance from you guys to align that. That would have to come back to you at a different date, so it would not be a part of these ordinance amendments. Um, but since we're talking about the topic, we'd love some input on that as well. So, um, any questions now before we take public comment?
Council, any questions?
Uh, was the state guidance for THC in place when we, uh, put it in our ordinance?
Yeah, so you might recall when we did the THC ordinance and, and CBD ordinance, that we had some conversation around the beverage portion of it, and we specifically called it out in our ordinance that we wouldn't allow it. We could have allowed it then. Um, but now, the August first, um, cannabis legalization that happened in the state, it, that was their understanding that with that approval happening, that they could now also sell THC beverages. So there was some confusion around it. They've, you know, apologized and, and discontinued. To our knowledge, it's just the one place, but I also, we haven't gotten a complaint on any others, so I'm not, it could be, there could be more. I think it is a really confused, a very confusing time right now for businesses and cities alike, and trying to figure out this licensing and new law.
Yeah. Um, I don't see anyone in the audience that I think is testifying on this ordinance. So maybe we'll run into and, and, uh, do the public hearing, get through that step, and then we can kinda open it up for broad discussion. Three items, um, the interim ordinance, Title VII, and then guidance on THC beverages. Is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
Um, council, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify? On the cannabis interim ordinance and Title VII ordinance, please step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to testify? Jake, Jed, it's your final option. Third offer to step forward and testify on the cannabis interim ordinance and, uh, Title VII. And we will close the public hearing. Council, maybe let's work down that path. So cannabis interim ordinance. Um, we've gotten the feedback. Uh, it's really a state agency that needs to be stood up yet. Twelve to sixteen months from now, and then life can go on. Um, any thoughts or questions there?
Should be here.
Oh, Tim?
Sorry.
Question?
Go ahead.
Anna, if the state office is stood up prior to twenty twenty-five, is it safe to assume we would then let the moratorium at that time? That's really what is.
That's really what the holdup is. Yeah, we'll follow whatever the state guidance is. So if they can sand it up earlier, we'll, we'll be ready to go on. We do know that the League of Minnesota Cities will be drafting ordinance templates that, you know, cities can use and kinda build off of, like we did on the THC side, but they're also waiting for the state office, so.
Okay, thank you.
So this is for new businesses starting out that come into town, right? I mean, that's what this is, so no one can just open up a shop in a vacant strip mall somewhere and start selling THC that complies?
Well, this would be specifically for the cannabis side. So we still have our THC ordinance that THC can be sold as long as they meet those requirements. This would be for the specific cannabis side that we would not allow retail of cannabis. So they're different.
Leaf versus.
Correct, yes, yep.
I think it's, one is smoking and one is edible, is that?
Probably the best way to explain it.
Looking for guidance, and everyone's looking away, so.
Oh, that's it. I mean, essentially, there's no legal way to sell smokable marijuana or cannabis in Minnesota until the state.
Stands up that licensing, or unless a city would take it on themselves, which.
There might be some, but it's probably gonna be pretty rare. So it's really just on that retail side of the smokable.
Got it.
Cannabis.
So my follow-up question to that is, we have a current business in town that's selling THC edibles. In town, correct? And they are grandfathered in with our original?
Correct. You can still, as long as you meet the requirements of our ordinance, you could still sell retail THC edibles at like a tobacco shop, a- as long as it meets the requirements. We did not allow though THC in the liquid form beverages.
Right. I'm gonna get to that in the, in the next point, but, um, so the retail version of it. So let's say hypothetically, there's a retailer that wants to sell gummies in town, and they are a thousand feet away from a school and five hundred feet away from a daycare, or whatever it is more than, um, could they just open up shop and start selling?
If they would meet our ordinance, and my understanding is that, so there is a difference between THC and like your, your regable, regular marijuana gummies per se, and it's determined by the, the level of product in them. So THC, yeah, it's, yeah, THC is a lower scale, um, product. That is completely allowed by our ordinance, but the retail side of it of, of higher dosage per se, it would not be allowed retail-wise until the state would stand up this office.
Okay. And that was earlier this year that we.
Did the THC.
Did the THC, and we're covered there. It's really the, what's new is August first state law allowing the smokable element of cannabis.
Or plants? And can we, I mean, that happened in Oatana or something. Fairable? They were selling marijuana plants at the farmer's market or something.
Yeah, so that one was, the police went and seized those plants. At the time they seized them, they were, uh, deemed to be hemp, which is the argument to the business owner, is that they were not yet cannabis or THC producing plants. So they were arguing they could sell them, uh, but they had the potential to turn into a plant that could produce THC, which is why the cops said they could seize them. Seen that yet. They would not want to be in that chief's shoes, but, uh, theory, yeah, so I mean, essentially in Minnesota, there's no legal way right now, other than on the reservations, to sell, uh, THC cannabis, smokable cannabis, unless you're on a reservation. So that's what they're, but it is, it's messy.
Mm-hmm, but you can use it legally.
You can use it and possess it.
And you can buy seeds, correct? I mean, there's places that sell seeds that people at home can grow it and.
So that part of it is legal. It's just actually the, the retail side of it. Like, it is legal to smoke it. It's legal to grow it personally, but.
Weird, there's no legal way to sell it in Minnesota, but for some reason you can possess it. Where they bought it, who knows?
Your job's easy, right?
Does that answer your questions, Tim?
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion on the cannabis interim ordinance? Again, it would expire, um, as soon as the state stands up.
Yep.
Process. Um, let's move on to Title VII, seeing no more discussion on that. Title VII ordinance, which is really, um, on public property, city property. We don't allow tobacco use on it. The concept there is we wouldn't allow the smoking of, cannabis there as well. The one question I have on it, I know it came up in a discussion mid-week in a, uh, a joint committee, was we have two beautiful, uh, vegetable gardens that people can rent spaces in. And if we don't allow them to smoke on public property, we maybe should amend and not allow them to grow it on public property? I, I just see an opportunity that someone might rent a plot from us and.
Yeah, that would, we can easily amend it for that. Yep.
Yeah.
And we'll, yeah, yep.
I don't know if that's even.
Probably just better safe than sorry. Yep.
Uh, any other discussion on the Title VII ordinance? Okay. Seeing none there, um, uh, then THC beverages. This is something we had discussed. We've put in motion, but it sounds like there's a violation and.
Our ordinance currently specifically calls out that beverages would, THC beverages are not allowed. So we would just have to amend, we'll, we would have to come back with that. We just want guidance on whether you guys actually, we can leave it as is, or we can bring back an amendment.
They're allowed to be purchased at a smoke shop, right?
Um, the, yeah, I mean, as long as they have, I don't know if any of ours do.
Yeah, and I, so this is, my recommendation would be just to follow state guidance here. Um, we discussed it a little bit too, and, and the, it's just so convoluted and complicated right now. The only reason I can see to not allow a business to sell this is that enforcement of THC impaired driving is extremely complicated. Uh, the state has yet to figure out what's gonna be allowed and how to enforce that. However, that's, is there really any other reason not to sell it? That, again, your guidance here, but we'd be limiting businesses who couldn't be able to sell it in Sauk Rapids or nearby. And so I don't know that we're really stopping impaired driving by not allowing it in Sartell, unless you had some sort of regional effort to, which I, I just don't, I think is gonna be impossible, so. Leave the enforcement side to us. We'll do what we can with it, but as far as selling it, then you'd be limiting businesses, and that's definitely not my intention either, so.
So if we were to allow it, is it, can you limit which businesses, like a bar versus a smoke shop? Or can, the reason I ask, I think, if I remember right, when we did this a few months or a year ago, is the reason we didn't do it is at a bar, someone's next to you, next to a child, could have it. And that's kinda along the lines of why we didn't approve it. So I, in my opinion, letting a smoke shop do it makes more sense than having a bar do it. But I get how it's unfair too, but.
Yeah, and I think we had talked about that from a staff perspective of kinda, we will really have to take a look at that ordinance, 'cause the way it's written right now is that you have to be within so many feet of, um, any facility that children frequent. Well, I mean, whether that's daycare or bowling alleys or ice cream shops, I mean, it's really hard to, we'd almost have to revise that ordinance to read differently, I think. Um, we haven't looked into it yet, but Carrie, you, you might be able to speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah, the state provided some guidance on what, um, where ch- children frequent. And I believe state guidance said over seventy-five percent, or over twenty-five percent of the whole space, if that's deemed used by children, so that would go over the, over the line. And then they would not be able to sell THC or cannabis beverages. But there's also some, some language that you also had to have a open liquor license to be able to sell the THC beverages, so that.
So it had to be tied with an on-sale or an off-sale?
On-sale specific.
License. So it's essentially restricted to restaurants and liquor stores. Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Convoluted would be an understatement.
I, I don't recall, um, when exactly, it, it feels like a couple of months ago, but that, it very well could have been a year ago, when we reviewed it, and I, I do recall our sentiment being, um, pretty hyper-focused on just keeping it out of, or away from the chill, away from children, right? I guess I'm not sure too much has changed, other than now you can legally smoke it in the state, since we've done that, and part of me is, um, outside of one violation that we're made aware of, like, what's the, what's the driving factor to change this within a twelve-month cycle that we've, we've reviewed it? I don't know that I'm, I guess personally, I don't know that I'm really against it. I, there's just so many unknowns to it that it scares me a little bit, and I know our, uh, area cities are grappling with it as well, uh, and counties of, of how do they proceed, and not sure if it's something we wanna lead in or learn from others in.
Yeah, and I think from my perspective, we're talking about distribution, right? So, uh, and having a state or, um, state, um, stand up its own licensing center to really give clarity on really what are some boundaries around the distribution of this, whether it's smoke shop to liquor license to some of these other areas. And if it's a liquor license, does it have all the other, um, or, or things in place? Or do they recommend having the things in place where it relates to near other locations? I get what you're saying, it relates to like if the facility actually houses kids as well with that li- liquor license, that may come into play. So I think there's a lot more questions than answers, and from my chair, I would, would prefer that we would leave it. Maybe add the growing piece to the ordinance. I think that was a, a good catch, something I'd never thought about. I don't think we would wanna allow that on public property. But, uh, ultimately, I think we, we would wanna take the state's lead and not be the leader, uh, in this area, uh, to see where the guidance that comes down from the state is, where I stand on it.
Yeah, I would tend to agree, um, kinda like Ryan said, I don't feel like it was that long ago that we enacted this, um, so I don't see a reason to change right now. I think, I know one's cannabis, one's THC, but I think if we. I think, I know one's cannabis, one's THC, but I think if we kind of, um, once that gets established, we kind of tackle it altogether. Within six months here, whenever that gets established, I think it makes sense.
Chief, can you review what the current state guidance is? Specific specifically to beverages?
So it's my understanding that as long as you're licensed properly, like we talked about. You can distribute it, which would include being at a bar and having a keg of THC, uh whatever, so. It may not be an issue now, it just might be something your business owners might come to you and start asking. My understanding is the profit margins are pretty big on this and that might drive business owners to want to be a retailer of a beverage. Uh, so I, and you're all right, right now it's not an issue, but it just, it might become one if business owners are coming to you guys. As far as enforcement goes, there's a lot of, the only fear I have is over any more restrictive. Uh, I agree with you guys, stick with the state would be uh my recommendation. But if it ever gets to a point where we're trying to enforce our own ordinances, it might become fodder for these movement groups too, so you just might want to consider that if. Again, not an issue quite yet, but just the one complaint.
And they were, I mean, I know it was Wayne that was working on it, it was an off sale, not on sale, and they just agreed to remove it. And I mean, so they were good about it, they just misunderstood what the August first.
Yeah, there may be people distributing, we're just not aware of.
They'll kind of come as a complaint basis, which is what this one came as.
I tend to think that, yeah, we should follow the state lead, but I also think. We should be considering our ordinance and and the fact that it is currently so much more restrictive than what is going to come down from the state. We should probably be putting the the wheels in motion. I don't want to lose economic development opportunity because we're restrictive and and. Some potential bar restaurant owner knows that they can't sell the beverage, and so they're gonna go. Across the river or somewhere else to open their restaurant, so I think those are all things we need to consider. And I I I think it's gonna become. Pretty commonplace, obviously, if people are already trying to sell it, um, even here locally.
I do believe, but we can find this out for sure, correct me if I'm wrong, Grant, I I think all the other regional cities allow. THC beverages. I think we were the only one that doesn't allow it, um.
And I heard that directly from some bars and. Owners of.
I know it's sold in Saint Cloud for sure.
Yeah, not knowing the other cities' ordinances, but that's exactly what I was told to.
And I I think if they're compliant and they they can handle the liquor portion and they haven't had major violations in underage. You know, sales, um, twenty-one and older, I mean, that's what liquor stores do every day. I mean, they they prohibit sales to minors and they are in a position to, you know, distribute properly. Obviously, they've been doing it with alcohol for years, same thing with restaurants, so. You know, if you're twenty-one and and you're in a fa- facility uh that serves alcoholic beverages, I'd. I'm not sure I see a big difference on the two. You're still getting carded, you're still twenty-one to to serve and if. If they're not and we have complaints on underage purchases or something like that, then that's something we can look into for enforcement. I guess, we we do checks on them all the time or, you know, yearly. So I I do think that if you drive across the river and go into Sock Rapids and go to their muni, you can buy it. Um, or lit Saint Cloud, I mean, I think we're putting our own um. Businesses at a little bit of disadvantage. Yeah, I know it's new and we can take our time and make sure that we're good, but I I would also hate to see us. Overstate. Our concern for it, I mean, we might not agree with it and whatever, but it is state law now that they can serve and s- and whatever. How they comply is twenty-one and older and 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 I, that's my opinion is that they should be able to handle it. They're doing it every single day with alcohol and it's no different as as I see it, um, as a intoxicating beverage, so.
Yeah, and just to clarify, you guys don't have to decide tonight on the THC beverage portion of it, we'll have to. Definitely look into that ordinance more, um. So that might be worth just, you know, what are the other regional city ordinances and and or statewide? Around the specific beverage piece, not around. Anything beyond that and, you know, how it's tied to on sale, off sale, like I said, we'd have to look at distance to. Kid facilities and.
What is the distance for alcohol? Is it similar? It's a thousand feet written here.
Yeah, for.
School and five hundred feet from a.
I don't think we have anything for alcohol. It probably was when it first came out. But just what we're dealing with here is that it's just so new that there's a lot of unknowns, but. You don't, you certainly don't have to make a decision on tonight, we just want guidance on, you know, should we. Put some work into researching a few templates out there, see what the other cities are doing, or we just want to keep the ordinance as is. Um, which is, we currently do not allow THC beverages.
I actually would like to see us spend some time maybe in a workshop through all of the ordinances, all the things that exist on off sale. When we say, hey, it's compliant, or as long as they're compliant, what does that actually mean, so that we can make a better educated decision, because I, i- it's coming, it's more mainstream. My stance is is that, you know, can we get to a place where we have some level of guidance for the distribution, what kind of license, what kind of. You know, what are other cities doing as it relates to? Are you gonna tell one bar they can sell it and one they can't sell it based on where they're located? Uh, there's a lot of questions. So I would love that we would do more work and then maybe study it even more as we continue forward.
Yeah, we could definitely pull a couple of templates and see what the other regional cities have and and then statewide. See what's out there as well. I know you've pulled a couple already, but we just didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves if it. Wasn't a desire of the council, but we could pull a few items and then bring it back to a workshop discussion and decide from there.
I'd appreciate that too.
Counsel, I'm looking for a motion on the cannabis interim ordinance and Title Seven ordinance amendments then.
I'll make a motion to approve the cannabis moratorium amendment to Title Seven A ordinance.
And uh, sorry, apologize, I will ask on Title Seven ordinance if we can add the.
With the addition of not be able to grow it?
Not allowing, growing it on public property as well. Thank you. Uh, so we have an approval, or excuse me, a motion to approve the cannabis interim ordinance and Title Seven ordinance. With the exclusion of uh public property, growing. Is there a second?
I would second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That carries. New business, uh, we have community grant requests.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is a grant request, if we think back. Um, we approved the addition of the childcare category to the community grant program policy on July tenth of this year. This is our first uh request, um, Eight Fourteen Services LLC requested twenty-two thousand to help cover. Plating fees, which include trunk, storm, water, sanitary and park dedication fees. The approximate cost of this will be less than the twenty-two thousand, but however, without receiving and verifying. The total buildable area, and that's how we calculate those. Development fees, um, I just used the total area of one point two five acres and calculated those fees, which resulted in. Approximately twenty-two thousand, and that is their request. The developer is proposing over eleven thousand square foot daycare center, which will serve approximately a hundred and seventy children and have. Thirty staff, um, and according to the financial policy that we approved, uh, the center will provide. The one fifty to two hundred childcare openings. Um, with the approved ratios and would be eligible for up to twenty thousand dollars, but if we recall. The final amount shall be determined at the discretion of the city council, so that ask. Tonight would be then motion and second to approve the community grant request up to the twenty-two thousand dollars. But just keeping in mind that'll most likely be around the twenty thousand dollars, which is the cap that we did designate for that. And on our consent agenda, we did approve the annexation request for this property. So this um, this development is starting um to come together, this is just the next step in this. To make sure it's feasible for them to complete um with those plating fees covered. I would take any questions that you may have as well.
Awesome. Counsel, any questions before we. Uh, move forward?
Carrie, can you just review the scale? I remember when we looked at that, um. There was question as to how we were gonna scale it.
Yeah, good question, um, and I could pull that up right now, uh, however, they didn't submit a full. Site plan for it yet, so they are still working within those ratios, um, but we will require them to fall within those ratios as we. Determine because that was pretty important as well. But I don't have that specific number, if you do look in the packet, there was a proposal, I think that they submitted. In a different state, so they would have different ratios than Minnesota state ratios, but they would have to align with that as well, because they get permitted by the state.
Right, what was our, um, was it based on per additional student or child that our contribution is based on? And did that change from when? Because I remember when we approved it, we had some questions about the scale that we were using.
Um, I don't, I don't think the scale actually changed, it was just the employ- the employees um requirement for the. The ratio to infants and.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Preschool aged, yeah.
And so they're fitting in the one, one hundred and fifty to two hundred range on the scale. Counsel, any other questions on the community grant request? I think it's phenomenal that um we're driving a hundred and seventy childcare, brand new childcare spots in our community. And I think on top of all that, just the location in the central Minnesota healthcare hub is very important for the growth of that area. So, exciting news, I'll make a motion to approve the grant request. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion on the community grant request?
Ju- just for clarification, would it be the up to twenty-two?
Twenty-two thousand, sorry, thank you. Second still? Clarification, it's up to twenty-two thousand. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? That carries. Last item under new business is West Side Reconstruction.
Um, Mayor, members of the council, for your consideration tonight is a resolution ordering the preparation of the feasibility study. And approval of preliminary design agreements for the West Side Reconstruction project. This is the first step in moving this. Reconstruction project forward. Uh, it is a large reconstruct project, similar to what the. Uh, city did a number of years ago on the east side. On the map, uh, the locations are shown in red. Uh, we also for reference are showing in green the two thousand nineteen Safe Routes to School project, which overlaps a little bit. And then also the County Road One project, which runs adjacent to it. Um, this just highlights the water system and the properties that are served by the water system that would be replaced with this project. Uh, and then also the sanitary sewer system. Uh, what isn't shown on these two maps though is Sartell Street, um, so that would be some additional properties. That would um get new water and sewer services. Preliminary cost estimates, um, right, right about fourteen point five million, however. Uh, these are really preliminary, the feasibility study would provide better cost estimates. It also would give the uh. Framework for the preliminary assessment amounts and then also identify different funding avenues. I did list a number that we are set up, uh, and we've talked with Rob about just assessments being one of them. Bonding for a portion of it, uh, the water fund, sewer fund, drainage fund. Uh, we did put this project on the water and sewer project priority list, which would make the, allow the city um. To leverage low interest loans um as a possibility, um, and then also the street funds. Miss any, Rob? Potential funding. Um, one thing to note, uh, the feasibility study is a requirement in order to do assessments on the project. It's part of the four twenty-nine process. Um, historically, over the last several years, the city has. Um, put an eight thousand dollar cap or eight percent the estimated market value of the property. Um, for residential, single family residential um properties. That is something we will recommend with this project. But in talking with Rob, um, it's something we probably need to look at moving forward, um, just to make sure we. Are able to finance and fund a lot of these projects, but because. It is adjacent to recent projects that also had some assessments under the same type of guidance, um, we will. Likely be recommending that. Uh, all that framework will be laid out in the feasibility study, however, and the council will have. An opportunity during the preliminary assessment hearing and then the final assessment hearing to make a final decision on that. Uh, schedule for the project, um, if authorized the feasibility study tonight, um, we will send out invites and hold the. The first public open house in September, um, and that's really just to introduce the project to the residents, get some of their feedback and input. Tonight would also then authorize a survey for the project, soil borings and televising. Um, and then that'll help with the feasibility report. Twenty twenty-four would be the design of the project and the start of the bidding process with planned construction then in the twenty twenty-five. Uh, construction season with a little um final paving and striping in the spring of twenty twenty-six.
Clarification, televising. What are, just looking for pipes, through pipes, in pipes?
So this is kind of the the last really old utilities in the city and we don't have good records on. Record drawings of what's actually out there. We did similar with County Road One, we televise a storm sewer and sanitary sewer, so. We make sure that we're getting all the existing connections accounted for. Um, we can look at different ways and opportunities to route things, but just making sure we understand what is there before we go in and rip it up. And find a bunch of surprises. It's a way to eliminate risk during construction of finding stuff we don't know is there.
Thank you.
Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Counsel, any questions on West Side Reconstruction?
April, all affected homeowners or landowners will be notified about that meeting via mail or?
Yeah, we'll be sending out a a letter to each individual property owner and then we will also update the ClearGov project page to include that information as well.
Any other questions?
Um, Rob, from a capital expenditure planning perspective, and and you know, I know you've been doing projections over the next couple of years from a budgeting perspective. It sounds like in in reading this, this has been delayed in the past. Based on budgeting, can you walk us through kind of your thought process on? What what do you anticipate and where this is at in the capital spending expenditure process?
Yeah, when we approved the financial management plan this spring, it was just under thirteen million. Uh, the scope has changed a bit. And there's still quite a few unknowns as we conduct the feasibility study, uh, but now we're at fourteen and a half million, so a difference of one and a half million from. What we had adopted this spring to now, uh, obviously we'll have opportunities to change the scope, understand pricing. And work within that budget we adopted this spring, but uh it's pretty soon in the process to. To make any changes at this point.
Anything else?
I I think uh if we all, I don't know when it was, when they came in and it was pretty emotional plea about their roads and. Condition of their drive and, um, and it's a long time coming, so I think it's well worth the time now and. We need to move forward with it, I think, and I would agree that it's only gonna go up in price.
Yeah, and what's in front of us now is the, um. I guess pulling the project together, um, feasibility, understand the overall expected costs, the televising, what are we gonna find? I guess we'll have to then determine a, a hearing this spring, it's it's gone up one point five. I'm not sure if that's scope creep and we've added more to the project or if that was uh market changes.
If if that's a question, it was a little bit of both, so in talking with um John, we did add Sartell Street to the project. Recognizing that was also um older utilities, older roadway, so there was a whole stretch of uh roadway that was added. Um, and then just material increases. Uh, what the feasibility do, will do though is it'll lay out each of those different utilities, each of the different roads. Um, so that we can look at different ways to scale the project, um, to stay within a a budget. That the council's comfortable with.
And also to add, the timing is in alignment with our financial management plan, um, to do the reconstruct in twenty twenty-five. Uh, it's just the scope and the price that is. It's just the scope and the price that has changed since then.
Yeah, and I feel like we need to go through the feasibility study just to be able to have an intelligent conversation of what the price is and what's all in scope, so. Any other questions on the West Side Reconstruct? Seeing none, look for a motion on that.
I'm moved to approve.
I have a motion to approve the feasibility study and design. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Department reports, Public Works and Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You have our report in front of you. Couple of highlights, Lions Park Playground is in, installed.
Awesome.
The surface is going on, ten until right now on Saturday. So then with some backfilling and getting done, we should be, I think the opening is September tenth. So it should be right on schedule and, and operational, so.
Awesome.
That is one point. Second point I'd like to bring up is talk about our drought situation. I know we had a lot of rain in the last day or so, but we are still losing ground on our, on our pumping levels. Our neighboring cities, Wade Park went to a total ban about two weeks ago. St. Cloud sent out a letter last week recommending watering one to two days a week. Sock Rapids was talking about doing the same. I, I don't know where they ended up on theirs. I would have full intentions of coming in here tonight and saying, I think we need to shut all the watering off. I think I have a change of opinion on that with what we have happened yesterday, this morning, and it looks like more rain coming. I, I would be in favor of maybe putting out a, a release of, you know, trying to limit your watering to one to two days a week. Kind of in line with St. Cloud's, but I don't know. It just depends on where this weather is gonna, you know, we're getting to the end of the season now, the cooler nights. I think we try to be good stewards, you know, of the environment. We try to have a good relationship with the DNR. You know, our restrictions, you know, we're, we're not meeting our restrictions right now and, and a lot of cities are not, but just looking for a little guidance and a little opinion of what the council thinks.
John, what's our current flow at daily flow and maybe a perspective where it started the year or where it started the spring?
Since May, we were pumping about five point five million every day.
Okay.
And in past years, you'd probably do that five times, six times a year. Then we got into mid-July, August, you know, mid-July, it dropped above four point five. And like last night with, or yesterday with the rain, we dropped to three point five. You know, it, it just dropped really quick. So, you know, we've been hovering around that four and a half million a day to five right now. It's, it's, you know, a lot higher than a normal, you know, season. Again, it, you know, I, I teeter with it. I, I just, I look at, you know, sustainability and watch, you know, it, you know, we're pumping. We're pumping a lot more. Our, our equipment's running twice as much. We're pumping a lot of chemicals. Our chemicals are almost doubled, you know, the costs. It's costing, it costs money to pump it. Costs money to produce it. Yes, we are reaping the benefits too on the, on the water meters also, but I don't know. Like I said, I, I, I had full intentions of coming in here before we had the rain and say, I think we better, you know, shut everything down and, and, and let everything kind of recoup, but I, I, I I lean towards the, you know, let's recommend the one to two week, you know, one to two times a week watering and, and see where we get. I mean, we're going to see our levels. I mean, I, it's going to be hard to police, granted, but we'll see what, if it helps getting our levels down to that, to a, you know, a workable level that, you know, right now our pumps run, you know, twenty-three, twenty-two hours a day. I mean, everything is just running wide open, so.
Counsel, any other questions or thoughts on that?
John, I've seen a lot of cities in the, or cities closer to the metro who are putting bans on daytime watering. Do you think that would have a positive effect or, I, I do see people watering at like three in the afternoon.
I don't know how much daytime watering we really have. I mean, there are a few out there, and of course, it isn't a practice that we should promote at all, but, you know. You know, most of our watering happens, I mean, our towers take a huge dump at about five in the morning till about nine, you know. Eight thirty, nine o'clock, we, we drop down. Each tower dumps about ten feet. You know, it, big swoop, and then we get back, we get back to nice, clean tower levels, level tower levels all day long. Then the evening, they drop again, but not as much as the morning. That morning hit really hits us hard.
Where are we relative to, was it two years ago when we had to do the watering ban?
Um, I mean, we weren't pumping this much.
We weren't?
No. I mean, it's, um, so last year, just for example, in August, our pumping levels, uh, our pumping level of our well was twenty-six feet. We draw it down to. Right now, we're at twenty-two feet, you know, so it's, you know, it, it, it's better, but not great. Our static levels, that's where our water is at, it has dropped about six feet in all our wells. It's not terrible, terrible, but it ain't great either. It takes a lot of, you know, rain to build that back up. You know, the recharge, it takes a long time.
How much rain would we need?
I don't know. Days. We can't have too much either. We got another problem.
Yeah, right. Careful what we wish for.
It, it's a long, you know, it's a, a long process, but I, I think if you're, you know, a good steward of the, of what we're trying to do and trying to reduce it, you know, it helps, every little bit helps.
I'll also add, in the future, when the city does go to get another permit for additional wells, they will ask, you know, what you did during the drought times, and they play that into a factor too on how easy or hard it is to get future permits. Just with the, the permitting you have to do through the Department of Health. So doing something that shows that you are being good stewards and that plays a role with the permitting agencies as well.
And we did send out a different communication last week, and now you're asking if we would just ask for the two days a week to be the next communication. Is that correct? But we did send one out last week, correct?
Yeah, we sent one out just basically conservation, asking for good conservation and just kind of giving them some tips, but didn't go as far as saying, you know, two days a week or anything like that.
We're currently on our odd even plan.
I do think people actually have gotten better with the odd even, you know, after what we went through last year, and I, I, I think it was an improvement. I, I, I can see improvement.
Go ahead, Alex.
Yeah, I would agree with the recommendation of one to two days and just kind of pass that burn along that if we don't see the improvement that the ban could happen in two weeks from now, so.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm fine with, with the recommendation, whether it's water one to two days a week or not during the day. What I don't want to do is confuse people that we're going away from our odd even. And so they get to choose back-to-back days to water, and we just stir up another problem, right? So, however, I, I guess I have comfort in however you guys want to manage that direction to the residents from a conservation perspective. Just bring as much clarity as possible.
We can sit on with Anna and Nikki, and we can kind of craft something to get a letter out.
I do hopefully, and hopefully it's not unfounded, but light at the end of the tunnel that we're halfway through August and we've got some rain, there's more coming.
Yeah.
That we won't actually have to go to a ban, but.
Agree.
Is there comfort in letting?
I think we have to show some sort of incremental tightening. Storming, I agree.
Okay. Any other questions for Public Works Engineering?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. Nineteenth, they, where are we at? Are they going to stripe it? It seems like it's pretty close.
Yes, it's getting close. If you've driven by recently, you've noticed the trail is paved, the non-wear is paved in the north half as well. Weather dependent, they'll be paving the wear on the entire thing, hopefully by the end of the month here, and then striping soon after. So it really should be wrapping up, hopefully pretty close to the start of school is the, is the goal here. So, all of it should be, should be fairly soon.
Five points?
Knew that one was coming.
No idea.
Um, it's, as far as I know, I didn't go out there today, but I heard it's painted already.
Yeah, I saw pictures over the weekend. It was already painted and.
Yeah, so I would, the, the number I have heard, they have to have it open by the fifteenth to get a bonus of some type, so I would guess.
That's tomorrow.
Yeah, that's tomorrow, so.
Plenty of cars going through already.
So you might get to sleep it, you might get to sleep in an extra fifteen minutes because you don't have to go around tomorrow.
Maybe.
So twelve oh one tomorrow morning, it should open. All right, thank you. Fire?
Mayor, members of council, in front of you, you have a monthly report for fire. One highlight, just like to thank the public and our firefighters for a very well-attended and successful golfing, third annual golf outing, so tons of support from the public businesses. Just want to thank everybody involved. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for fire? And thank you for your water conservation. Please.
Mayor, members of the council, I have my report in front of you. A couple of highlights. First, it wasn't in the report, but Anna and I met with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust and went over a lot of stuff that was really helpful as a new chief, but, and the recommendations for us to lower injuries and, and decrease liability to the city. Every initiative they had presented to us, we're either doing or are beginning to do at the PD, so that was encouraging to hear. And secondly, I updated the monthly report, as I'm sure you saw. So if there's anything else you'd like to see that you're not seeing, I included the, an updated org chart, so you can see all the names of the members of the organization as well, so just let me know if there's anything else you'd like to see or see differently, so.
Awesome. Any questions for PD?
Jed?
Just one comment and some work that I, I was doing with the St. Cloud Police Force. Talking to them, they just wanted to say thank you for your partnership. They said we've always had a great partnership here with Sartell, but they, they're excited about the future, so good job with that. And then they also just wanted to thank all of us for our involvement on the task force and, and stepping up with the trafficking, trafficking task force. They said that you're going to be a huge help with that, and they were really excited to see us partner with that, so.
Chief, just curious on your first few months, is there any concerns or trends that you see that you want to address in the future immediately or just basic crime or certain trends that you might have noticed as coming in with fresh eyes?
Uh, as far as crime goes, we've done a really wonderful job as a city. I think the PD and the, my predecessor and all the staff at the PD, it just, we have a, a pretty low crime rate here, and I don't think that's a mystery to anyone. I'm still waiting for my phone to go off at two AM and it hasn't yet, so that's a good thing, although I would like it once or twice to maybe get the adrenaline pumping a little. But, you know, from that perspective, there's, and we talked a little bit, some of us have talked about some technology upgrades to try to do a little bit better and a little bit more and offer some more information to our citizens. Other than that, the biggest ask you're probably going to see is me as staff and trying to get, the staff at the PD are really happy to be here. I mean, we're full-staffed. I constantly get beat up by the chiefs in the area and the sheriffs because we're the only agency that's full-staffed in the region. But trying to maintain that is difficult in the current environment. We're still only graduating four hundred out of our colleges for law enforcement. There's fourteen hundred openings in the state of Minnesota now. A hundred and sixty-two agencies listing on Minnesota Postboard, and so it's trying to stay ahead of that curve that I see is our biggest challenge. We're there now, but how do we stay there? And how do we redesign maybe how the staff at the PD is organized to maybe correct a few morale issues and trying to keep proper supervision throughout, which is, my goal will always be twenty-four-hour sergeant on duty. So my hope is to get there and, and that will help us stay ahead of some of those issues too in the state, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions for PD? Thank you. City Commission updates?
Yeah, the only update I'd give is that we did finish interviews for park commission candidates. So we did select five, and we'll be bringing forward at a future meeting appointment of those five members, but super competitive applicant pool and a really great team. And I know Tony stopped by today and is just thrilled about the outcome and the interest and to have that almost twenty people applied for five seats, so that's pretty incredible and an awesome opportunity for us to have some great balance and talent and all sorts of different professional backgrounds. It'll be exciting to get that commission rolling. So I'll come back with the appointments at a future meeting, but just wanted to let you know we wrapped up that process, so exciting for us.
City Council Committee updates and miscellaneous business. Tim?
As you probably saw in Anna's notes in regards to the APO, they had a quite a large assessment going forward to do an environmental engineering study on the bridge on Thirty-third, crossing Mississippi down in St. Cloud. They were going to share the wealth by population across the cities that were APO members. We happen to be second in line in second largest, well, second or third largest assessment as a city with, as I saw it, the, the least amount of benefit to this bridge and environmental study going on for the Beltway. So we discussed with staff and engineering and, you know, what our best approach would be, and that was to head-on come into the meeting and to say that we don't see a, a real benefit in this assessment, and it was large, and we didn't have it budgeted. And they kind of shocked everybody, but I found out once I got in the room, I wasn't the only one. There was two or three other cities that had their hands up before I could even say anything, which was great because they broke the ice. And so we pushed it back on them to really go back and do some core feasibility studies on this Beltway and really what, what the route is or it, what's the benefit? Is it really functioning for what they say it's going to be? They, they think it's going to deter truck traffic through fifteen and Highway Ten and put them on a belt line around the city, which makes no sense. There's not a, a trucker and Ryan, you could probably attest to your, your, your business, but that doesn't take the direct route. And, and even though it might have stoplights or, you know, some traffic, they're going to typically go straight through and to get on a Beltway with roundabouts that takes them around the metropolitan area. If it was back in the day and they built four ninety-four, six ninety-four, great, but it's not that at all. They're going through neighborhoods, they've got forty mile an hour, thirty-five mile an hour speed limits and, and residential and schools and everything along the way, so I don't see that as a benefit. There is one, you know, positive side to it is it would take division traffic south of the metro area and get them from ten to fifteen to County Road Seventy-five, but it's never going to really loop the whole ring, so. Benton County is very upset about this, that we tabled it because they have a big ask at the legislature for twenty-nine extension, and they feel like they're going to be left out to dry without the support of the APO. They might have to bear some of the costs themselves and/or Sock Rapids. And I encouraged them, and I said that we see a benefit to twenty-nine, so I think that as a city, that east side of our city could benefit from upgrading that belt line area. But as far as a ring road and what its purpose is, it needs to be self-defined to really, what, what really is it and is there property for it, which we don't have in Sartell? They want to go right through on down Second and cross the bridge, and that doesn't make sense to see a large truck traffic going through, so. That's the update.
Awesome, thank you.
Tabled for a year, sorry, for a study.
Well, we'll remember in January to keep you on the APO so we can keep that train moving. Jill?
Not tonight, thanks.
Alex?
Nothing tonight.
Jed?
Nothing tonight.
I have nothing as well. I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.